Good evening and welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for November 5th, 2018. The first agenda item is the signing of the warrant.
Motion to approve the warrant, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
And I would vote in the affirmative as well. Next is the approval of the October 22nd, 2018 minutes.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
And I would vote unanimous as well. Tonight, we're going to go a little bit out of schedule if anybody that has an agenda in front of them.
They're not on. Their mics aren't on.
Yeah, it's on.
Yeah, it's on. It's on. It's on for the audience.
Tomorrow being Election Day, we have Senator Fatman here with us tonight. We have State Representative Brian Murray. They have citations as well as I do for Sue Edmonds, the Director of the Library. So what we'd like to do is have Sue come up and do your presentation and then get your citations and...
Gee, those are it, huh? Oh, wow.
I guess I kind of let the cat out of the bag, but I just want to get them on the road.
I agree that they're all very busy. Well, thank you. I didn't expect that. I was asked by Rick Vilani to come in and I'm following the Youth Center and the Senior Center and they had given me updates and I thought that's a great way to tell what the library's been up to since it was in, since 1986 where we're in the, where we are now. And I basically brought, as usual, as a librarian, I brought brochures and I brought some information about what we're doing this month. And what we do every year is something called the Airus Report that we submit to the Board of Library Commissioners. And you get a snapshot of how a library has been doing business for a year. So we do this in June and we go through July 1 of a certain year. And I thought that would sort of help people understand what we do at the library. I gave you some data from that Airus Report just to tell you how active we are over there. And coming today, I was leaving and normally the library hosts over 1,400 meetings. I was leaving the library. We had English as second language going on. We had two, a Boy Scout, a Girl Scout meeting going on. We had people up in the children's programming room knitting club, and that's only for a Monday. And what happens is that we are always constantly active. And we had over, last year, over 152,000 circulations through, from, in, in the library, which means is that we belong to the CWMS Library Network. So we have the opportunity to, over a hun, over a million items throughout our 147 members. And it really helps us out because we can, what we end up doing is that we use our money the way we want to and then other libraries use it the way they want to and we share. And the cooperative sharing really expands all our collections and it means you get more bang for the buck. So from what happened last year is that through the network, the Milford Town Library gave, borrowed, let people borrow over 30,000 items from our collection. And we had, give us 16,000 back, which is pretty good. And when you look at the state figures for state aid, that's a big important thing because every transaction we do outside of our own library, we get a couple pennies, which helps increase state aid. So it says to us is that the Milford Town Library collection is strong. We have a collective collection and people want to borrow from us. Also, because we are one of the largest libraries in this part of Southern Western County, we also have people come in from Hope Dale, Mendon and other surrounding towns and people come in and directly borrow from us. We had over about 27,000 direct borrows from people walking in of items, which is really great. And the, I think what is really great about Milford is that we have the English as second language program. These are all volunteers that come in and we generally have about 14 sessions a week, a month, and we usually average about 13 people per session. And we've had a wide variety of people come in over the years. And we've had people recently from South America. We had them from Middle East, Egypt. We've had them from Poland. We've had them from other parts of Europe. And it really gives us a sense of helping out because when you go someplace, if I drop me in Germany, I wouldn't know how to speak German. And what this does, it gives people an opportunity to learn to communicate and feel comfortable about doing daily tasks within the U.S. We also work with Catholic Charities and we have a citizenship class once a week. So these are people who come in, they learn about American history and we prepare them for the citizenship class, which I think is fantastic. And we talked about 130,000 items within the library. It's not all books. We have games. We have a big ukulele club right now that people, and we have like four or five ukuleles. We have Roku's, which we use for streaming. We have four of those and what you can do, you borrow it from two weeks from us and allows you to use your own Netflix or other streaming channels. And also, we have something called Vudu on that that allows us our digital copies to be used with the Roku's. We also have a lot of STEM, STEM and STEAM are being used now. We have that as well in our children's department. We have something called B-Bots. I was going to bring one, but then I'd have to program it and I said, we don't really want it running around the room. So what that does is that when we do our preschool or our, some of our other programs, we use the B-Bots so that the kids can program, so they can make it move around the room and they're the ones doing the coding. We also have that down in the young adult room. Sometimes during, when the kids are over from Stacy, which is around 2:30 to about 6:00, we'll have the kids program these little robots and next thing I know, they're running up and down parts of the library and we just have to be careful that we don't get, we don't fall over them. And what is also really interesting is that we also have museum passes. And last year, we had over 800 circulations on the museum passes. But without the Friends, we would not be able to afford those. And a lot of the programming, the Friends are the people through their book sales and other, other things, what they do for us is they provide us with all our museum passes, which is a lot of money. And they also provide the programming money for the children's department, the young adult apartment, and also for the adults. So last year, we had about 400 programs for the Youth Services Department and about 4,000 kids attended through the, the whole year. So that, so I, without the Friends, we would not be able to provide a lot of services. So I'd like that we all collaborate together. And again, without the Finance Committee, we would not be able to do what we're doing with the building. Since I've been there almost 11 years, we've gotten a new chiller for the air conditioning. We have gotten a new roof, which is, the roof is 30 years old. Now we're working on the stairs. And again, the stairs are starting to crumble, but they've been there since 1986. So without the support of the Finance Subcommittee, we'd never get anything done. So I, what I like about working in Milford is that we have a great collaborative. We all work together. We want to make sure that the library's funded so we can do our job. And we really do. So I appreciate what everybody gives us in Milford and I'm glad that we're seen as an important part of government. Because without us, a lot of people would not have access to the Internet. And what we see now is that people will come in just to do their daily business. They may not have a printer at home and a lot of times when the schools are closed and kids are using their Google, you know, accounts, they come and use us because either they don't have a Chromebook available or a printer. Also, what's happening is a lot of people, they do their job resumes with us. We have a couple of databases that are part of a Cypress Suite and last year, we had over 600 people search and do resumes with our software. And we also have a few other databases that help with genealogy. We have Ancestry in the library and we had about 4,500 research questions on that. So we do a lot of things. We're just not books or DVDs. We're a place where people can come, congregate and also learn. And that's the beauty of a library. You want to have people walk in, feel welcomed and maybe come out with something they really need. So I, thank you for letting me update this. I feel that we've got a very strong library. We've got a great staff over there and I hope it continues. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll open it up to the board.
No, I just want to say that I appreciate the kind words that you have to say about both your, your staff and other departments that you're working with. That has a lot to do with yourself as a library director. It has a lot to do with the credibility that you bring along in dealing with different departments and department heads. You know, I know that we've worked together, talking, talked about different things, how we might combine resources and you've always been open to those ideas. And I want to say, you know, thank you to you and thank you to the Friends and your staff. And I know it's not an easy task, running a large operation, but it's no surprise to me that your services are in great demand, both from the community standpoint, Milfordians, and also from around the area. So, thank you very much for what you've done to help create that environment.
I have a lot of help from a lot of people at the library.
I know, and you've given them a lot of credit for it tonight.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, thank you, Sue, for being with us, especially during this, this first part, and then we'll get to the more important part as far as I'm concerned. But you're a great asset to the town. You always have been. Even when I was on the Finance Committee, you always made yourself available and I've always enjoyed working with you. So thank you for that. We're lucky to have you and you're doing a lot of good stuff there. And I know even dealing with all the students and our faculty and staff at the schools, you come up the conversation quite a bit. So we're lucky to have you and thanks for being here tonight.
First, let me talk about the importance of a library. So, and I talk about this all the time. I saw her at breakfast when President Obama was in office and there was a gentleman that was the head of Pediatric Surgery at John Hopkins University, grew up in inner-city Detroit. And he told a story about how his mother was a domestic and it was, he had a brother. And his mother learned that every single day when she was in a house, the children were always reading. So she joined the local library. She couldn't read or write herself, but she didn't let her sons know that. And they both went on to aspire, but she found it in the library, in the library. She taught them that this is so, so important. And that's why I talk about all the time about the importance of the library, of a library. Because, Sue, what you just talked about tonight is the resources that are there, they're there if you want them. They're there if you want them. And we're fortunate in Milford. We're fortunate to have someone like yourself and as you just said, the people that work with you, that make a difference, that make our library very, very successful. And you're 100% right. We support you and your organization, you know, 100%, because we realize the importance of a library. And so, you know, from the Board of Selectmen, I want to say thank you. Thank you for everything you do. And I want the people to truly understand that, the importance of a library, you know, because through reading and knowledge, you can only make the world a better place. And with that, I'm going to call on Senator Fatman, if you'd like to come up.
This is the hometown guy.
And State Representative Murray, I'm sorry.
How are you?
Fine.
Enough about the library now, we're here to talk about you.
That's even, well, it's even better.
Gentlemen, thank you. When the Senator and I heard about what Sue Edmonds accomplished, we thought it was very important to come here before you and have a very appropriate recognition for, for what she's done. You know, I think Milford really has a longstanding tradition of dedicated staff professionals at all of the different departments that we've had. And it's been evident and strong in our history across the board. And certainly, that's true in the library as well. And I remember when Sue was, was first appointed with, 2008, around that time. And I spoke to my friend Paul Curran at the time, I'm sure you all remember Paul, who was so instrumental in, in the library and really watched that library like it was his, his own. And I, I asked Paul, I said, "So what do you think of the new director?" "Oh, that girl, she's a crackerjack." Don't be offended he called you a girl.
I know, that was Paul.
But if, and I've told this to Sue often, if she could pass the Paul Curran test, then, then she's made it. And, and you know, we're very fortunate to have her here in Milford. And really, to ring that home, when I started serving in the House and became co-chair of the Library Legislative Caucus, I met with the Board of Library Commissioners, who, who I didn't know. And I had instant credibility with them. And it's not because of anything I could say or, or do. It was because my hometown library had Sue Edmonds as the director. And they have all known her for many, many years, worked together, rely upon her expertise and was, was very, very, just real complimentary of Sue and it made my job so much easier. So, as, as you are aware, we also have an honor to recognize Sue Edmonds for. And again, when the Senator and I heard about this, we wanted to give an appropriate recognition to this because, you know, we think it is, is significant. It's significant for Sue, it's significant for the town of Milford, it's significant for our library. And of course, we, we are congratulating Sue in recognition of being elected President of the New England Library Association for the year 2018, 2019. So we have a brief congratulatory resolution that I'll read and then turn it over to the Senator. Whereas Susan L. Edmonds has served as Director of the Milford Town Library since 2008 with great distinction. And whereas, under the exemplary leadership and guidance, oh, that's someone calling me.
Books overdue.
Books overdue, yes.
I don't make deals.
Good job, good job. No, where was I? Excuse me.
That was a good one.
Whereas, under the exemplary leadership and guidance of Susan L. Edmonds, the Milford Town Library has provided every person in the community full and equal access to outstanding library services, promoted innovation and collaboration, and is the center of civic life in the town of Milford. And whereas, the New England Library Association was officially chartered in 1963 as a regional organization and chapter of the American Library Association. And whereas, the mission of the New England Library Association is to provide educational and leadership opportunities for library staff in support of improved library services for the people of New England. And whereas, Susan L. Edmonds organized with great success and detail the 2018 Conference of the Association that was held on October 21st through the 23rd in Warwick, Rhode Island, and featured approximately 100 seminars and workshops. And whereas, Susan L. Edmonds, due to her high level of competence, dedication and ability, was elected by the membership of the New England Library Association at said conference to serve as President for the year 2018, 2019. Therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Massachusetts House of Representatives hereby congratulate Susan L. Edmonds for being elected, as said, President of the New England Library Association and extend to her its sincere congratulations and best wishes for continued success in future endeavors. That's from the House.
Thank you very much.
Now you have to wait to hear from the Senator.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And it's been a real pleasure getting to know Susan over the course of the last few years. I was not unseen in 2008 when you first came into town, but since 2015, I've found the Milford Library to be one of the most welcoming places that this community has to offer. And that's no short part due to Susan's leadership for sure, and her staff, who have, you know, welcomed me and my staff when we've had office hours and I'm sure Representative Murray as well. And we always have wonderful people that come in and visit us and talk about various issues that are on their minds. And every once in a while, Susan and I get to debrief about that and catch up, which is wonderful. And I know we talked about some stats and figures, you know, boy, the lessons you guys are teaching down there, some of the instruments. And I, maybe have some free time after tomorrow, I might be glad to learn. We'll see.
We have four ukuleles.
There you go.
Ukuleles is what I was thinking about.
Tiptoe through the tulips, maybe?
Yeah, exactly. But I have a citation here from the Massachusetts State Senate and I know Representative Murray has one from the Massachusetts House as well. I'll read them both. Be it hereby known that the Massachusetts State Senate and Massachusetts House of Representatives hereby extends its congratulations to Susan L. Edmonds in recognition of your election as President of the New England Library Association. And be it further known that the Massachusetts State Senate and House of Representatives extends its best wishes for continued success in all endeavors. Congratulations, Susan.
Thank you.
It's wonderful to have you in, as a part of this community.
I, as my staff would say, you're never speechless. Thank you very much. It's an honor. The New England Library Association covers all six New England states and has over 1,000 members. And I ran the conference there this past, and we had a very successful conference. Half the, the attendees came from 1,000. And now I get to run it for President and then after that, it's past President. So it's a three-year commitment. And thank you very much. This is, this is really nice. I appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
You deserve it. You've worked hard.
I appreciate that.
But I think there's one more left.
There is.
One more on the table here.
Oh, ooh.
Yeah.
And Sue, if I, if I may, you made reference to English language learners and, you know, I have a, a special love for the Youth Center. I have a special love for the library and, because they work very close together. And again, I'm going to speak about through education, through education, you can make a difference. And I think the two of you do a phenomenal job. I know you. I know it's very difficult for you to sit there and get this recognition because that's not who you are.
True.
That's not who you are. But, you know, sometimes in life, you, you know, when you do great things, you have to go through things like this. And the town, the town owes you a lot, owes you a lot. And, you know, I think about it as, you know, a month and a half ago, we went through all the Finance Committee things and, and you're the Director of the, of the library and you're worried about the front steps out, you know. So you're more than just the Director of the library. You're, you're, you do everything. You do everything. And so, this community owes you a lot. We owe you a lot. And you've done a great job since you've been here. And this honor to be elected President, you know, and I know it's a three-year deal and I know it's going to be long and it's going to be hard. Congratulations. Just a, just a real testament to you, you know, for the good work that you do and to what the Senator and the Representative have said is, is so true. We're so fortunate to have you here in our community. And when that gets all the way to Boston, and there's a lot of communities on the road leading to Boston, but when they're talking about our library in Milford, it says a lot. It says a lot. And if I could ask you to come on right up here, so I don't have to sneak around there.
Okay.
Be it known that the Board of Selectmen hereby offer their congratulations to Susan Edmonds in recognition of being named President of the New England Library Association 2018, 2019. And also for your 11 years of dedicated service as a library director to the town of Milford. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Selectmen extend their very best wishes, express the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this fifth, fifth day of November, 2018. Signed Michael K. Walls, Chairman, William D. Buckley and William E. Kincaid Jr. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you very much. It was a surprise and you're right, Selectman Walsh, I, I don't like the limelight. I just want to do my job. And this is very heartfelt. Thank you all.
And you earned it.
You earned it.
That's nice. Yeah, thank you, yes. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative, Senator.
Thank you.
Good luck tomorrow.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Get up early. Hopefully, you get a break in the weather.
Oh, yeah. No, it's raining.
What do they say? Vote often.
Really, vote often.
I think we have to do the public hearing, right?
Yeah, we're late on this one. Yeah, next agenda item is the public hearing, the tax classification hearing. Just so anybody in the audience knows that you will, it's a public hearing, you will have the opportunity to respond after they have made their presentation, if anybody's here to respond. Okay?
Before we get started, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to jump on the bag wagon and thank Jennifer and her staff for the tremendous job they do for us, plus the work that goes into preparing this. So public, thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you so much, Joe.
Now I turn it over to Liz.
All right. This is not nearly as exciting as Sue, so I apologize in advance.
But you're just as great.
Yeah, right, right, right. So tonight, we've got the presentation up here for everybody to see and we're just going to kind of go through the different slides to present just some factual information for you all. And then please feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Otherwise, I'm just going to kind of rip through it and, and I'll take some at the end if, if we have any left. So these are the quick topics that we are going to talk about tonight, just the certification of our values and new growth approval. The value changes from last year to this year, what a single tax rate would look like, what a split tax rate is going to look like, what that impact is as we, as we look at a rate shift, what the values are by class and their share of the levy, what the average tax bills are, what's that impact going to look like for our taxpayers. And then we're going to ask you to consider a residential exemption, the small commercial exemption, the open space discount, the impact of the 1.5 million that was voted at town meeting to offset the tax rate. And then just have you do your motions at the end and sign some paperwork and then we're gone. So.
Is that easy?
It's piece of cake. Piece of cake. All right. So, new growth. New growth is obviously any property that's taxable for the first time, okay? It's new construction, it's our additions, it's our new personal property accounts, businesses that have come into the town, subdivided land and condo conversions. So noteworthy growth for this year, 22 new single-family homes, 15 condos, new Milford Crossing redevelopment, Reliant Medical, 14 residential subdivision. We had 82 new businesses this year. And we had an additional 9.2 million in utility growth that we didn't have in the prior year, which was very significant. If you look at the bottom on the right-hand side, you'll see that last year's growth was 875,000. This year's growth was 1.3. So we had a significant jump in growth and a lot of that has to do with those particular highlighted items that I've given to you on the left. Taxable value for the town is up 4.6%. Residential growth calculates out to 465,000 in tax dollars. The commercial, industrial, personal property, 841,000. Value changes. This is where we can really see what happened by different classes of property, different uses within the community. Single-family, 3.2% is our increase in value. These are all based on the market. Condominiums, 4%. Two, three and apartments, you're going to see big jumps, 10%, 15 and 11. That's where we saw our big, big jumps this year. We had some significant sales in multifamily properties and, and these value increases are, are a reflection of that. Vacant land, also, 13%. Commercial, 5. Industrial was pretty much flat. There's a negative there. Values weren't decreased. The value decrease that, that's represented is depreciation from the year prior. So there wasn't any negative adjustment to value there, but the, the figures will work out that way. So if we take our levy limit, which is 70.8 billion, million, sorry, we look at what we're actually levying, which is the 67,169,907. Last year's levy was 64,600. So we have a 3.97% increase overall in what we're levying, what we're raising in taxation from the year prior. Excess levy capacity, this year, 3.727,988. Last year was 3.29233. So this is money that we could raise up to through taxation, but are not. Total town budget, this is just on the right-hand side, a simple calculation for you. The total budget of the town, estimated receipts, all the revenues that are coming in either through state aid or motor vehicle excise, fines, everything else that we put into that calculation. The difference is what we need to raise through taxes. That number divided by the value of the town that we've already certified and had the DOR approve, we divide by, multiply by 1,000 and it would give you a single tax rate without a shift of $19.54 per thousand.
Jen, just real quick. Do you have a better understanding of this than I do with the benchmark and understanding what other communities are doing? How many communities of size in Milford are running with that type of levy capacity? That is availability to tax but not taxing?
You know, last year, I ran the numbers because I thought it was significant last year and it was. The, Milford was in a very impressive, higher, higher end of the, of the, of the communities. A lot of towns are not doing that.
They're taxing right to the maximum levy capacity.
They're taxing tight. They're very tight. You know, you've got towns that are doing debt exclusions. They're, they're doing overrides. They're, they're not even just taxing to it, but over and above it.
Over and above it.
Yeah. Yeah. So it was quite significant last year.
Not a lot.
And I'm sure it's the same this year. You know, it's very, very good.
Do you know anybody in that position, other communities that you can think of?
Do you know anybody in that position, other communities that you can think of, approximate size?
I don't off the top of my head. I can tell you that this information and just for the public as well, is all available online with the DOR's website.
Okay.
Through the Division of Local Services. And I'm happy to run those numbers for, for future reference.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But right now, off the top of my head, I couldn't.
Sorry to interrupt, but that's, that's a big number.
It is. And it's, it's pretty significant. It's, the town of Milford is in really good shape, really good shape. So, moving on to the options, this is where we discuss our rate shifts and what they look like. 2018 is the first column. That was last year's rate shift, which is a 1.58, shifting on to the commercial, industrial, personal property. 2019, the recommendation that, or the figures that we're using are based on using the same shift, which is a 1.58 again. And then the numbers play out there. It shows you what the tax rate would be, which if we're in that orange column, 1654, which is two cents less than last year for residential. And if we go down lower, we see 3088. So that's, that would be the tax rate decrease on the commercial, industrial, and personal property. The bold numbers in the top and the bottom sections, 3.09 percent and 4.68 percent are the percent changes that you would see with that shift. So, and that's on the impact of your average assessed value in those different classes. So residential would see a 3.9 percent impact with this shift, 4.68 on the commercial, industrial. And then we're giving you a couple of different options to see how those numbers start to skew. The actual most even percentage of change would be this next column over, the 1564, which is kind of like trying to play with that third decimal to get that percent as close as possible. So you see almost a 3.6 percent for both. The reason we did not recommend that shift versus the 158 was specifically because we had such significant jumps in those multifamily properties. So they're going to get hit twice, real bad. So they're going to get the 15 percent increase on their value and then with a shift back to residential, the residential rate goes up as well. So we went with the same shift as last year when we gave these numbers to you tonight.
And those are, Jen, those are generally investment income properties that people are buying, driving up those costs?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. The, the sales that we're seeing.
Value is based on sales, right?
Yep. Yep. Income and expense as well on the larger, if it's four units or more, we're looking at, you know, what are they bringing in and what's passing?
I'm thinking about two and three family.
Yeah.
What's driving those numbers?
Yeah. I mean, a lot of what's selling is properties that were owner-occupied on one side, for example, and renting out the other. And they're selling them to people with out-of-town addresses for all the money. Big, big money, way over and above our assessed value. So we had no choice but to bring those up. You know, our ratios have to, to be in line. So, and we've had some really big sales on, on a larger scale with the multifamilies as well, you know, some, some big, big, like $64 million, you know, sales on apartment complexes. So with more kind of in the works from what I'm told. So just looking into the future, these, I think these values are going to, are going to hold strong into the following year as well. So 158 is what we're using as we go forward in the presentation. Basically what this is telling you is what the values are and what the percent of the share of the levy is between residential and commercial. So without a shift, the residential would bear 78 percent of the tax burden. With the shift, residential bears the burden at 66.9 percent. So it's a little bit less on the residential. That, that commercial portion goes up. Average tax bills, this is really where you see a dollar amount. 2018 is the 5,054 for a single family. Using the 158 shift, that new tax rate, their tax bill is 5,210, which is a 3.09 percent increase or $156. We look at the two, three, and apartments because those are where you're going to see, again, based on value alone, big increases. So you've got two families, 9.92 percent or $419 on your average assessed two-family. Your three families, $698, 14, almost 15 percent. And then apartments, which are your four and over, 1,600 and 10.9 percent. Commercial, 4.68, pretty, pretty standard in any given year, somewhere between three and five is, is pretty reasonable. And then industrial, again, was pretty much flat. So those are, those are our three, those are our three classes of property that are going to come in this year and say, geez, is that right? And it's right. But we'll be able to defend that and obviously show them why that is. So that's pretty much the history of what we've done with the values this year and why we've done that and what we recommend for a shift. The next three slides are just very quickly, a residential exemption, a small commercial exemption, and the open space discount. None of these three have been adopted in prior years. I'm happy to go over them in detail. Residential exemptions are primarily for either a city community or a vacation community, which really doesn't fit us here. The small commercial exemptions really benefit such a small class or group of properties. And then it shifts on to the other commercial properties quite significantly. So it's not something that they've done in the past, I believe for those reasons. And then the open space discount, we don't have any property that we have classified as open space to offer a discount to. And finally, the results of the 1.5 million. So on a single-family home, without the 1.5 million, if we just looked to that last column, they'd pay $117 more for the year on their tax bill. So that's, that's the benefit to them for having done that. It's not necessarily a savings because their taxes still, you know, still went up, but it's, it's, it's lessened by $117. And then you go down the line, same concept. It would be $88 more on a condo, 104 for a two-family, 120 for a three, and then we go up, 365. For apartments, 593 for commercial and 816 for industrial. So again, we acknowledge the excess levy capacity, which is 3,727,98876. And we would ask that you take, do a motion for each of these votes and then I'll have you sign the LA5 when we're finished. So lots of information. Any more questions on any of this?
No, great job. I don't know that it's been easier than it has been this year in understanding it. I think with each year.
Yep.
You refine and you polish and you, you work through.
Yep.
And I think the board has done, and yourself have done a great job at explaining this and working through it. That doesn't mean everybody in the community understands levy capacities or, or tax rates and how they shift and how they adjust. But I've had the benefit of hearing you quite a bit and hearing your, your, you know, prior colleagues. So I understand it and I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
No, I don't have any questions either, Jen. You always do a great job. And I know you, you've got a great board that supports you and obviously gives you lots of accolades for all your work and your staff. So we very much appreciate that. You always give us the information well in advance. So.
Yep.
We certainly know what we're, what we're dealing with.
Yeah. And I would just also say, not to, you know, get on a little thing, but this whole packet, these numbers don't come together without the cooperation of specifically the town clerk and obviously the finance director. A lot of the figures that I need to do these calculations and then present this information to you comes from them. We're early this year by a week or so than we normally are. And, you know, after getting free, you know, it's like the year end and then free cash gets certified. Everything kind of happens in a certain order. And we're early, which means everyone else had to get their stuff together sooner to get this to you when we did. So I'd just like to thank them also for their contribution to making this happen.
And I'd like to say this, I'd like to congratulate myself and congratulate your board. And I think what people have to realize is that when, you know, we go to town meeting and we give back to the tax rate, the 1.5 million dollars, the effect that it has on it. And, and I'm glad to see that not only do you work with the residential tax rate, you're working with the commercial tax rates. Because Milford has a lot of small businesses and a lot of those small businesses call the three of us up and say, you know, you have a dual tax rate and why am I paying this? And, and so it's nice and it's very encouraging to see that the assessor's office and the board of assessors is cognizant of that and that you are aware of it and you, you do keep them in the forefront of your mind. And, but I also have to go back and say, in the town of Milford, we're very fortunate to have the services that we have. And there's only one way you get those services, is through taxes. And so, you know, we're very fortunate. We have a state-of-the-art police, fire, highway, town hall, school system. I could go on and on and on. And there's only one way you get that. And yet we're, you know, with your department, you keep that in the forefront of your mind and you, you try, you know, do the best you can on a, on a daily basis to keep people's taxes, you know, as low as we possibly can. So great, great job. You know, I commend everybody in your office, although I get accused as not stopping in there enough by Becky, but that's all right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Bill brought up an interesting point. We built no schools, no police, no fire, no sewer, library. We built everything with no override.
Right.
Or with any debt. I mean, that's amazing. Talking to other communities that they look at Milford and they say, how do you do it? I mean, it's obvious how we do it. That was the cooperation of all departments, the finance committee.
Yeah.
You know, people yelling, screaming, complaining they're paying taxes. But you check around and see what they're paying and what you're getting in the town of Milford for the amount of money that you're paying. It's a hell of a deal.
No colored, no special colored trash bags that we have to buy, no special fees?
They pick up your leaves and they deposit them up there.
Yep.
I want that. I don't have that. I want that. You got colored bags.
Colored bags.
Yep.
So you need a motion from us to set the rate at the one. Yeah. Let me work through this. So, you know, I'm, I'm torn on the tax rate. I understand why you chose the 1.58.
Mm-hmm.
And through a lot of thinking through this today, these are very tough decisions because either way, you're shifting to somebody.
Yeah.
Somebody, at the end of the day, that number is still getting picked up somewhere. And so it's for that reason that I'll vote or make a motion to approve the 1.58 tax offset. For starters, let me make that motion first.
I'll second that.
I vote in favor of that as well.
I'd make a motion not to grant residential exception for properties that are principal residents of the owner. I think for the reasons you stated, those are primarily set to help and assist in, you know, tourist communities, Cape Cod communities, South Shore communities, those with beach, and a lot of seasonal residents. So again, motion is not to grant residential exception for properties that are principal residents of the owner.
I'll second that.
I would vote affirmative as well.
Next motion is not to grant a small commercial exemption.
I'll second that.
I would vote affirmative as well.
And the last is not to grant an open space discount for which we don't have any open space identified. Thank you.
And I'll second that.
I would vote affirmative as well.
And those are consistent for the benefit. This is a hearing, public hearing, and folks have the opportunity to talk to this issue. But those, those last three motions are consistent with every board that I've been on and every member that's voted for it has all voted to support consistently for those reasons. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if.
I was just going to say, is anybody here for, would like to be heard in the public hearing? Seeing nobody?
I just ask you to sign the form, the original, that confirms the votes that you've made today. And then this gets sent over to the Department of Revenue first thing in the morning and we'll have a tax rate approved tomorrow.
Sign it here.
Just at the bottom in the blank white space.
Blank check.
Another job well done.
... in growth for the next couple of years.
Yeah, I would say. You know, I thought that new growth number is one of the highest I've seen in a very long time and it really caught all of us by surprise.
It's going to be even higher next year.
Yeah.
Wait till the new apartments and the condos and.
Oh, yeah.
It'll become denser. And that's, this isn't, Milford isn't the only community facing density challenges, but I think the whole country will be facing.
Yeah, tax growth is great, but there's an, the other side to that is the impact.
Demand for service.
Demand for services, absolutely. Thank you all again.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Thank you. Is Maureen next with the Senior Center?
No, let's get through this. Yeah, let's get through scheduled appointments and then.
Maureen will be next.
Hi, Maureen.
Hello.
Welcome again.
Thank you.
Hello, Sue.
We're tag team today.
Are we missing a light? It seems to have gotten darker right where you're sitting. Maybe it's just my imagination. Or maybe it's because the president thing is on. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So Sue and I are here to make a recommendation and seek approval for candidate for a part-time clerk-receptionist position at the Senior Center. A little bit of background, as you know, the Senior Center staff by an amazing team of volunteers. They are the heart and soul of that center for sure, as I've learned since I started here. But Sue had the good fortune last summer to have a young intern who worked every day of the week throughout the summer. And it sort of demonstrated the importance of that continuity day-to-day. The Senior Center has so many programs that run concurrently and that there are so many changes throughout the week that it's important that there's some point of contact that they're every day that helps to communicate to all of those volunteers and make sure they know of changes that are coming. So this would be in addition to that great team that she's got already. So a little bit about the process that we used. We posted the position for two weeks. We received 12 interested applicants for the position. Sue and I sat together and we read all of the resumes that came through and we decided there were five candidates that we wanted to learn a little bit more about. So I made calls to all five of those individuals and we decided to move four of them forward for an in-person interview. One of the folks opted out. She was pursuing a second opportunity at the same time and she thought that was more in line with what she was looking for. So we brought three individuals in for an interview. And we were looking both at their sort of clerical and administrative background and also the soft skills that they would need to have a position like this at the Senior Center. All three individuals brought unique capabilities to the role. But Sue and I agree that there was one individual who had the administrative experience that we were looking for, as well as the right demeanor to, to hold that position. And so that individual also provided three references when she applied for the position. And I called all three and they provided very specific detail and examples of where that individual would be a perfect fit. So we would like to recommend that individual, Fran. I provided all the information that you need there for this position. Again, it's a part-time position, Monday through Friday in the mornings. It's a level one, step one. And we would have them start at the, the first level of the salary. There'd be no request for accommodation there. It would be contingent on passing the Corey check and the start date would be dependent on that as well.
Makes sense.
That's exactly what she said. No, we did, we did interview a few people and this one individual really stood out.
Yeah.
She has the heart and soul that you need to work at the Senior Center. You've all been there. You know how busy we are. It's more than a job. I'm sure a lot of people could do the job, but it's more than that. You, it's a feeling you have when you walk in. You have to want to be there. And I, I truly believe the woman that, that did, that we did choose, she showed us that the minute she walked in the door. So I think she would be an excellent fit for this position. It will be funded through the Formula Grant, so for now anyway, and we'll see what happens down the road. But it's certainly something that we've been looking for. We certainly need it. We need to have the same person sitting at the desk every day so they know what happened the day before. Volunteers are awesome. We're going to continue to have them. But I think it's really important to have that person, that point person in place to welcome people in and make them feel welcomed when they get there.
No, just an observation. It's, you know, this is the first time Maureen had the opportunity to work with somebody from the start of a process through its completion and through recommendation. And it's just nice to see how you work together, how you did some phone screening, how you, you know, pulled some of the burden. Because in my experience, hiring people is a job in itself.
Yep.
And, and it's a, you know, getting the right person and getting the right mix of skills and personality is key. And so it's just good to see all of this happening and.
She did an excellent job.
Working together. Working together. Working together. I trust both of you.
It was very nice to have someone take that lead position and, you know, do it correctly.
Well...
You know, we've done it before, but did we do it correctly before? Maureen made sure that everything got followed.
So you're generous in your praise, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that Maureen earned that. But I just wanna say, it's also so much of what the hiring department is doing and what they want, and specifying that upfront, and knowing what you're looking for is important to that process. So it takes a team, and it looked like this team worked through the challenges of hiring somebody, and I appreciate that. And so with that, would have, you know, I'll...
Their recommendation? No, I'm very comfortable.
I would like to just touch on a couple of things that Sue brought up, and I talked about it, Maureen, when we brought you on board, is when you work in an organization that doesn't have a human resources department, and I use the simplest, simplest things, that your employees come up to you and say, I would like to take the day after Thanksgiving off, and do I have it coming? And you've got meanwhile, eight things coming at you all day long, and you say, first thing you do is you make a snap decision, oh yeah, of course you can. And you find out later on down the road, they don't have the day coming, you know. And so to have somebody like, you know, you on board now, having a human resources department, Sue made reference to it, it just makes your job so much easier. You can be the director of the Senior Center, and anything that has to do with personnel, you look at that employee and say, well, you have to go see Maureen, you know, so that they get an accurate answer, you know, right away. But I also have to say that I've been in this community for over 30 years, and I've seen everything that Sue Clark has been involved in been a total success, total success. And so, you know, as chairman of the Board of Selectmen, I can only say, thank you, back you. If this is your decision, and this is both of you have made this decision, I'm with you 100 percent, 'cause I know that the thoughtfulness and the work and the, you know, that went into reviewing all these people, and this person that you've selected will be the best person for the Milford Senior Center. And, you know, Sue, I give you a lot of credit when you go there and you watch what goes on there on a daily basis. And not that I'm there a lot, but I'm there. That's a lifeline to some of those people. And I say to you all the time, when you're walking the front door and they're sitting there at that little round table having a coffee and a piece of toast, that may be the only conversation they have that day, you know. And so it's a very, very important place for the seniors of our community. And we need to make sure that we staff it properly, so thank you.
Very impressive. I've been lucky in working with Sue and having the opportunity to go down there and meet some of the volunteers. It really, I'm sure behind the scenes, there's so much that goes into it, but it appears on the surface as such a well-oiled machine. And the services that are offered in the town of Milford are so far above and beyond what most other towns offer, and the span and the breadth of those services, incredible. So I've been so impressed. Every time we've done tours for people, I still join her because I love walking around that place, and it impresses me, so.
Yeah, it is impressive.
Yeah. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to accept the recommendation of the director of the Senior Center and our director of human resources, and make a motion for Francis Litzia.
Litzia. Mm-hmm. Litzia.
Litzia. And it's a step one, level one recommendation. And that's it.
No, I'll second that. Best of luck to her.
And I would make that unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last scheduled appointment is our town attorney, Charles Barty, Downtown Revitalization Guidelines. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We spent some time with the downtown facade program, working on the paperwork that would provide a structure to the program. Essentially, what we provided are three documents in draft form. The first document is an overview of the program, talking about what the program will do, how you will apply, who would be qualified, what the designated area would be, what the sorts of improvements are that we're seeking, et cetera. It's a 75 percent public-funded, 25 percent privately-funded program. The second document is essentially the application that an interested party would file. It has the information such as the current use, the location, the proposal, what it encompasses, whether there would be leveraging of additional investment by virtue of the public investment in the project. And then the final document that has been provided is a sample evaluation form. So in a nutshell, this would work similar to the way a program worked several years ago with CDBG funds. And in this instance, what would happen is individuals who are property owners in the district, in conjunction perhaps with their tenants, would come forward with a proposal for facade improvements. They would summarize what the proposal is. We would work, as we know from town meeting, we would work with an architect, with design plans for the project. We would put all of that together as a package, and then they would be evaluated by a team. Ultimately, approval, once the evaluation process is done, would be through the Board of Selectmen. The proposals would be evaluated on a weighted scale, where there are, on a scale of one to 10, 10 being the most advantageous and the most responsive project, one or zero being the least responsive. And then also, there are weights assigned to different aspects, the things that we're looking for. So for example, a project that is not within the district would not receive consideration. A project that is within the district and has a facade on two streets, in other words, it's a corner lot, that would be something that would be highly advantageous because it has a potential impact on commercial investment on two different streets, has a greater impact on the overall improvement of the downtown. A larger building, a larger street facade would have, again, a weighted advantage because it is larger and therefore a more dramatic impact. A property that has a large amount of changes to the facade, as opposed to a small amount, would also receive a highly advantageous score. I'm focusing mostly on what's highly advantageous, because that's our goal. We're looking for the things that are gonna, you know, ring all the bells and get us where we need to be. There is also something in there that weights highly a project which preserves the architectural history and integrity of the buildings. We're not looking to totally eviscerate whatever architectural beauty there is in the downtown. We're looking to preserve that, so we're looking for something that coordinates well with what we have. So it's my understanding that we have submitted paperwork to the state through the town administrator, Mr. Vilani, and that we are waiting to hear back, and that it is quite probable that the first portion of the funds will be released shortly. So we're looking to ramp up. There'll be a selection committee. Once proposals are received, we need to first get the word out that we're ready to solicit the proposals. Then proposals would be received, and they'd be reviewed by a committee. I think we've talked about maybe five, five folks. So those individuals would have the ability to score them. The scores would be then compiled, the assessments evaluated, and recommendations would be made to give it not only a sense of transparency, but also an opportunity for everyone to look at the proposal and to see that the proposal meets the guidelines and furthers the mission of the downtown revitalization program.
Nice job. It looks thoughtful, Charles. And just for the benefit of the general public, the requirements consist of having a letter from the property owner, that business owner is not the property owner, a list of the projected revenues and expenses, two bids from qualified contractors, drawings detailing the work as part of the project, a description or sample of the project material and colors, proof of insurance, the person applying for additional money from the state and taxpayers, but also must be current on personal property taxes and real estate taxes. No outstanding amounts owed to the town, that's redundant. A copy of current deed, copy of insurance certificate, and a copy of mortgages and liens to see if they qualify.
We're also looking, just as I might add, for compliance in terms of any licenses that have been issued, zoning compliance, et cetera.
Okay.
So we're not going to reward somebody who's a scofflaw, someone who is in flagrant violation of our zoning, et cetera. We're looking for people who work cooperatively. And I might say, we're gonna be securing our investment, the town's investment on these properties with a sort of a loan or a mortgage on the properties that gradually over time evaporates.
That is true.
So we don't wanna fund something, and then two years later, the property owner uses that to sell it. We don't wanna fund something that two years later is going to be dismantled and our investment goes away. We want investments that are gonna be enduring. And so as part of this process, we want a long-term commitment from the property owner that they're going to maintain this, and the incentive for that is each and every year, we'll dismiss a little bit of the amount that's owed.
Seems thoughtful, so I don't have any questions.
No, I don't either. It's very thoughtful, and they covered everything. And I've been able to attend quite a few of the Downtown Revitalization Committee meetings, and this is stuff they've been talking about for a long time. So when we got that grant through the state that the governor signed for the 150,000, this is where they wanted it to go. This is something that we've been supportive of from day one, so it's nice that it's finally here.
I might also add that the committee has also reviewed these three documents and supports these documents as well. And tonight, we're just looking for your support so that we can forge ahead. We'll tweak it as we go along, as we find deficiencies in it. We'll tweak it if necessary. But the main thrust here is to get some structure to it so that we can begin to solicit the projects. We have to have the funds expended prior to June 30. So that means we need to go through the process of soliciting applications, approving them, funding them, designing them, et cetera, and implementing them long before that. So up until this point, our hands have been tied, but the funds seem as though they'll be released shortly, and we've taken all the steps. We're waiting for the state at this point. We've done everything we can do from this end. Mr. Vilani's been in touch with them two or three times within the past few days, just to make sure that this is moving.
All the paperwork has been submitted. It's coming through the Massachusetts Marketing Partnership Office of Travel and Tourism. Andy Maloney is the contact person. I finished the documentation with, again, Charles, thank you for the help, this morning, and all documents, they need originals, have been mailed to her. So the one half, or 75,000, we're hoping will be issued shortly, direct deposit.
But this does not require a motion or a vote on our part?
The board could move just to accept the program, the application and the evaluation. It would be most appreciative.
As demonstrating your support of this, and that we're all working with all our oars moving in the same direction, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, with that, I'd make a motion to support the recommendation for the 7525 facade program and downtown improvement efforts.
I'll gladly second that.
And I would vote affirmative as well. Thank you very much, Lou.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Never thought we'd get here. It takes a lot. The state helped out a lot in this one.
Okay, now we're gonna back up for, next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here for invitation to speak?
Come on up.
Come on up.
Mike.
Do I need to sign up for additional three minutes, Mr. Ward?
No, no, you're good. Go ahead. Have a seat.
Next one. Can I stand, gentlemen?
Sit, please.
Might be easier just so we can get the...
That way, 'cause they can see on the camera.
All right.
So real quick, anybody that's here this evening to speak in reference to the chief, we're gonna do the same rules as we did the last time. Everybody will have three minutes. Last time you were here, Mike, somebody surrendered three minutes to you and gave you six minutes, which is fine. The rules, no derogatory remarks, stay on focus.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I appreciate you guys letting me speak again.
Sorry, can you, sorry, can you sit in? I can just get a better shot.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Which microphone would you like?
Just turn that one towards you.
Okay.
There you go.
Let's talk about October 22nd. You guys entered executive session and came back with the decision that you're gonna put the notion of the chief's response into the letter, the March 20, what is it, March 26th letter, I believe? I've read the letter. The letter was leaked, and I know who leaked it. And it's inappropriate. What you did was stall. You stalled for the supporters of the chief. You tried to put it in his court and make it look like he was gonna be the one to walk away from the table. I know what's in the letter. There are allegations. Nothing has been proven. Allegations, that's it. Has there been an official investigation into those allegations? Because if there is, I'm more than welcome to accept those. But if those allegations are accurate, show us proof. Show us proof. I'd be more than happy to accept them. And the thing is, is this is getting ugly, gentlemen. We have citizens of Milford receiving anonymous letters in their mailboxes, threatening them because they stood up in support of the chief, and that's accurate information. I know a lot more than you guys think I know. A lot more. Everybody in town talks to me, and I talk to everybody else, both sides of the argument. All right? I want that to be understood. It's inappropriate. Respect the process. I respect each and every one of you gentlemen as men. And I respect you as men in positions of power, and I understand that. But we have to act appropriately. I don't appreciate the theatrics comment. I thought that was extremely disrespectful to the chairman of the board. And in case you haven't noticed, I'm pretty, pretty lit up. Given everything else that's been happening, I'm not gonna comment on that, because I respect the process. I will direct one comment, though. I believed in you. I supported you. I, and what I, what I know now, I'm extremely disappointed. Extremely disappointed. But I respect the process, and I respect you as a person, and I respect your privacy. But I will not have people trying to follow me. I will not have people trying to take pictures of my vehicle. I respect the process. I ask you to do the same. And I ask you guys to take those allegations that are in that letter that was leaked and then put in the town crier for everybody to see, to look at those again. Ask yourself, are they founded? Are they valid? Because you are about to ruin a man's career over unfounded allegations that have not been proven. And if those allegations are enough to cause you to not renew the chief's contract, it's the story of the pot and the kettle, gentlemen. The pot and the kettle. If allegations alone are enough to take his, take his seat, kick him out of office. And the same goes for any public servant that's serving in town hall at this time. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? I brought, I have a statement I'm gonna read right now, and I'm also gonna submit it for the minute.
Can we, how about we let...
No, I'm gonna, I think it's, I think I've earned that, if you don't mind.
No.
Because that young man brings up a lot of points, but it's not, it's not one side. Throughout this process, I've taken the advice that all of our lawyers have given to me as a selectman throughout this ordeal with the chief's contract. The result has been frustration for much of the public for not having a full understanding of how we got where we are today. I understand that and appreciate it. The Board of Selectmen had concerns about the chief's behavior and made those known to him in meetings with him and in writing in the March 26th letter that has been referenced multiple times in the media. The Board of Selectmen did not receive a response, and we voted not to renew his contract. Though I hope these letters would never be discussed openly, they were released to multiple outlets under the Freedom of Information Act. We put off establishing the police chief search committee and gave the chief an additional two weeks to respond. We will be discussing his written response and the next steps in our executive session tonight. During this group, during this time, the group supporting the chief is also moving to have me removed from the Board of Selectmen. According to our bylaws, they have the right to do so, and the process is spelled out for them. However, since they formed, I've had two bags of trash dumped on my lawn, a rock thrown at my house, strange people slowing in... at my house, strange people slowing and stopping while driving by, and one young woman making a comment to me while I was walking in my house after completing yard work this past weekend. I believe it was the same young woman that placed a false report to the police. This lie was enhanced by the police recording of that call being released and posted on social media. How did that recording get released within hours of the call being made? It's obvious that this fringe group is working hand in hand with the leadership of the police department, and that's unacceptable. This group continues to lose credibility, and based on the support I am receiving, they have gone too far by attacking me and my family personally. This has been a ridiculous experience, and I know how crazy things can get. I have been involved in Milford politics for over 20 years, and I thought I've seen it all. Believe it or not, they have crossed the line. As many of you know, I have a 10-year-old son, Caleb, who is the reason Lisa and I were put on this earth. Caleb has Down Syndrome along with multiple health issues. He can be difficult, and there are often times of frustration that all parents experience. There are also experiences that only parents of children with special needs can understand what Lisa and I deal with on a daily basis. However, Caleb has been a gift. He only sees the good in people and has no bias towards anyone. Lisa and I consider ourselves lucky to share him with our friends and neighbors in Milford. The one constant that we have had is the support and kindness that this town has shown to our son for over 10 years, and we thank you for that. This recall group has stooped to an all-time low, bringing up my son as fodder for removing me from office. This, folks, is completely out of bounds. When grown men, if they can be called that, have a conversation on social media about a 10-year-old with Down Syndrome and the problems he faces in school, this has already gone way too far. The members of this recall group should be ashamed of themselves. Again, when our town allows grown men to pick on a disabled child while other members of the recall group either remain silent or even pile on, I am ashamed, and we all should be. This is an embarrassment for Milford and should be for Tom O'Laughlin, who this group claims to help. When a group allows children to be collateral damage, you have overplayed your hand. Regardless of how anyone feels about what has transpired over the last year, all I ask is that people stay focused on the matter at hand. Coming to my house, trying to intimidate us, and making false allegations is not how we operate in Milford. I will not resign, and I will not be blackmailed. I promise to make the tough decisions if I was elected to the board of selectmen. I have kept that promise, and I will continue to keep that promise for the next two years. And I want this put in for the record. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
He's not coming back.
Nope. You can't, you had your three minutes, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask for a five-minute recess.
Mr. Chairman, may I apply three minutes to Mike?
We're gonna take a quick five-minute recess, and then we'll come back, okay?
Well, that's convenient.
Okay. Just gonna take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
We're gonna return from our five-minute recess. As I committed to, I'm gonna allow anybody invitation to speak. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. Maximum invitation to speak, anything related to the chief will be 30 minutes. Is there anybody else that would like to have invitation to speak about the chief? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself just publicly.
My name is Nick Tadio. I live at 34 Woodland Avenue. Chairman Walsh, Selectman Kincaid, Selectman Buckley. I would just like to very briefly say, in response to Selectman Kincaid's remarks, that I wholeheartedly agree with Selectman Kincaid that any such behavior on social media is inappropriate, and that regardless of the opinions that any of the voters in Milford may or may not have in regards to any of our elected officials, there is no excuse for targeting children, family members. That's not what this is about. And anybody that would do something like that and would target an elected official's spouse, child, relative, whomever, is not somebody that I personally want to associate with, and that this is just strictly a exercise in a political initiative, and that at no time should this be personal. And I would like to, and I know, you know, Selectman Kincaid, I totally understand if he does not want to engage me on this, but if, I am more than willing to help anybody who feels that they're being treated unfairly by having their family members targeted in identifying those people and removing them from that social media outlet. And that's, you know, that's really all I have to say, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the board. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else here that would like invitation to speak? Okay. Thank you very much. And I, again, gentlemen, am gonna come forward, and I'm gonna ask that we, as a board, reconsider the vote that we took, rescind the vote, not to renegotiate the chief's contract. I would like us to go back into negotiations with the chief. There were some remarks made at the last meeting. I don't take them personal. I think that there's a lot of activity in the community that's going on right now in support of the chief, and I think we need to take a step backward, in my opinion, and reassess where we are. And at the end of the day, maybe we'll come to the same conclusion. But I've had a lot of people reach out to me and talk to me about personal things in their life that the chief has been involved in. And I would ask, I would ask that we entertain a motion to rescind the vote that we took, was taken, I should say, was taken, not to renegotiate the chief's contract so that it allows us the ability to go back and sit down and have a conversation and see if we can work things out. With that, I'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just three items tonight. I would like to report on Chapter 90, local transportation aid funding for fiscal year 2019. We've been informed by Governor Baker in the legislature that they have approved his supplemental budget for an additional $40 million in Chapter 90, local transportation aid funding for fiscal year 2019, which represents a 20% increase over the usual funding amount. Milford's Chapter 90 apportionment will now be $986,257. If you've noticed, we have a new TV projector here in Room 3. I want to thank Rob O'Keefe and Milford TV for donating and installing the new projector and new camera controller for the robotic cameras, again, here in Room 3. They will be placing three new microphone stands in Room 3, and they have agreed and will provide any and all maintenance for this new equipment. So again, thank you to Rob and Milford TV. One last item regarding the youth center. I've been informed by Jen Ward, youth center director, that their telethon held on September 15th raised approximately $8,000 for the youth center. They want to extend their sincere thanks to the many, many individuals and organizations who donated their services, products, and time to make this event a huge success. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
No, no comments, Mr. Chairman.
I don't either. Thank you.
No comment. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Rick. Next agenda item is old business. Under old business, we have a vacancy on the conservation committee.
Mr. Chairman, if we can, I would like to put that off to the next meeting. I didn't have a chance to go through all the resumes and everything, and I know there was a recommendation by Mike Jimpichu, which I appreciate, but some people in there have been waiting some time. I just wanna make sure I go through it. I also know that we have a vacancy from Salsamino on the Geriatric Authority. I'd like to make sure we get that on the agenda for the next meeting as well, because I know they need to have a full board with the important work that they're doing.
Are you okay with that, Rick? You got that far as the...
Yes, we do intend to have the geriatric and possibly the ZBA vacancy also.
Oh, ZBA, too.
As an alternate, I think, position.
Yeah, there is.
So we'll try to get all three of those on for the next meeting, which is November 19th.
Okay, next agenda item is new business. First thing on new business is the Milford Youth Football and Cheer Permit to Obstruct... Let's see where they're going. Milford Youth Football and Cheer Permit to Obstruct the Sidewalk. What's the address on here, Rick?
Basically, they go in front of Shaw's Market, Liquor World, Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay, so all these here.
And Honeydew Donuts and...
Yep, Liquor World, Shaw's, Oliva's, Dunkin' Donuts, and Honeydew. The dates and times are 11/18, Sunday, at 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., 11/21, Wednesday, 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Am I reading that right, Rick? Those are the...
Yes.
Okay.
3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
11/23, 5, Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Saturday, the 24th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The 25th, Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and then Monday, the 26th, 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Move, Mr. Chairman.
Second it.
I would make that unanimous as well. Next is the town administrator, a contract to award the repair of the roof.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The roof at the Purchase Street School, which, again, is a town-owned building, is in need of replacement. We have had a number of leaks there. We did receive three quotes to install. As the board, I'm sure, remembers, pursuant to the Modernization Act, the town created a revolving fund whereby proceeds from the rental of this property were placed. This fund authorizes expenditures without appropriation for the upkeep of the properties. I would be asking the board to allow us to repair that roof. We do have three quotes. The low quote was from AUPA Construction, Inc., of $21,900. Again, we would use the money from the, basically, the rent received from the building. There'll be additional rent coming in. There may be a sum of money that we will need to use to, again, replace this roof. It's in need of repair, I'm concerned. We have children in there from as little as several months old up to, I believe, kindergarten age, somewhere in that neighborhood. So I would be asking the board to consider allowing us to replace that roof and obviously to use the rental funds from the surplus account that the town has created, that town meeting has approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we award the construction of the new roof at Purchase Street School to AUPA Construction, the low bidder at $21,900.
I'll second... Oops, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say consistent with Rick's recommendation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I would make that unanimous. And the next item under new business is the Milford Youth Center acceptance of a gift. Dear Town Administrator and Board of Selectmen, I am writing to you on behalf of the Milford Youth Commission to inform the board of the request to accept a gift from Vermont Mutual Insurance Group Charitable Giving Fund and Mrs. Susan L. Ciocconi. The Milford Youth Center recently received a grant for $1,000 to support our nutrition and physical fitness programs. Due to the support of the community, local organizations, and businesses, the youth center is able to continue to provide our community and its youth members. Thank you for your time. Jen Ward, Director of the Milford Youth Center.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve $1,000. Obviously, we have to accept that gift, and it's very generous by the Vermont Mutual Insurance Group Charitable Giving Fund, and I'd like to, I know a letter goes out to them to thank them, but I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
And I will make that unanimous as well. And the next agenda item is in correspondence, the Mass Department of Transportation, the rehabilitation of Route 16. Rick, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, basically, it's a letter for the board's information. There's a rehabilitation project on Route 16 from Route 109 to Beaver Street. It's designed to improve traffic safety operations and mobility for travel. It's outlined in the letter. This is a letter from Epsilon Associates, Inc., which is going to be involved. This comes from the Mass DOT. Basically, what they are asking is for any comments the town might have. This letter has been sent to all town departments, engineering, planning, highway, et cetera. But I just wanted the board to be aware that this project will be in motion.
And all departments have it and...
Yes.
Okay. I'm wondering, as those get gathered, are gathered, is that something the board could look at?
Absolutely.
You know, just, are you gonna pull it together, or who pulls it together?
Typically, what I would...
Engineering?
Engineering would, but then I would help coordinate it, but probably the engineering department and the planning department would do it.
All right, yeah, it'd be great to see that input. I think I might have some of my own.
If the board has any, obviously, input, that would be welcomed also.
Okay. Well, no? Good. And I am as well. Okay. So we will be going into executive session tonight, the discussion regarding the police chief's contract and the situation with Suffolk Construction. That will require a roll call vote. We will be coming out of regular session and back into regular session, so...
Vote in favor and vote aye?
Aye.
Aye as well. Take a motion to go out of regular session.
Move.
Second it.
I would vote affirmative as that as well. And we will be, again, returning to regular session after executive session. Good evening and welcome back to regular session of the Milford Board of Selectmen's meeting for November 5th. We are back in regular session now to discuss Article 32, which is the Police Chief Selection Bylaw. May entertain a motion that we...
That we want, Mr. Chairman? Sure, I'll support that. Make a motion to initiate the Article 32 Police Chief Selection Bylaw process, which is outlined in that article.
I'll second that.
And I will not vote in favor of that.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
And I would make that unanimous. Good night, everybody, and thank you very much for watching. Have a good evening and a safe week.